Opening this select board meeting of January 11th, 2024, beginning with the executive session at 6:30 PM. So if the Assistant Town Administrator could read the executive session agenda, please.
Good evening. So item number one for tonight's executive session is pursuant to general law, chapter 38, section 21a and three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and obtain legal advice from counsel on Hudson Walker versus the Sherburne Planning Board, Land Court 23 MISC 000398. Item number two is discussion regarding the collective bargaining strategy for negotiations with AFSC Council 93, local 335 DPW bargaining unit, pursuant to general law, chapter 38, section 21a, 3 and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus DCAM 449 Mass. 444, 2007. You'll need a second in the roll call room.
Okay, and I do declare as the chair that I feel it's necessary to discuss these in the executive session as they could affect a negotiating position of the town. So I'd like a second on entering the executive session and a roll call vote. Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Marion? Marion said aye, and I am aye as well. So we're five to nothing. So let's.
Do I need to open Planning Board hearing? I mean Planning Board attendance?
Yeah, I guess. I don't know, though. I only see two of you. You don't have a quorum.
Uh, Rob and, oh, Frank's not on yet. I thought Frank was gonna be here.
Oh, there he is. He just entered the waiting room. Hang on. I just let him in. Hi, Frank. We just, we just opened the executive session and we're, um, select board has already entered into session, but you need to do the same for the planning board. So Addie May is gonna do that.
All right, so I'll, on standing in for the chair tonight, I will open the Planning Board portion of the executive session, taking roll call. Addie May, aye. Frank Hoke.
You need to unmute, Frank.
Aye.
Okay, so Addie May, aye. Robert Wolf?
Aye.
And Frank Hoke.
Aye.
Excellent. So I'm gonna, uh, we'll turn, we'll pause. 7:25 and I just returned the recording back on. And so we're ready to start the meeting. So I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. I have had no request for public comment tonight. Items can be taken out of order and topics on anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the consideration of appointments to the Farm Pond Advisory Committee for Beth Jonas for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027, and consideration of appointment to the Conservation Commission, Teresa Luskin for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027. Item number two is the consideration of approving early voting hours for the March 5th, 2024 presidential primary, and Jackie Morris, our town clerk, is here. Discussion on town policy regarding meeting scheduling, recordings, and minutes. Jeremy Marsette, the town administrator, will discuss that. The summary of the town operating budget for FY '25, Jeremy Marsette, Chief Thomas Galvin, Chief Zach Ward, and Sean Colleen will be here to speak on that. The consent agenda is the paywall warrant in consideration of a one-day liquor license for community center events. And item number six is the consideration of routine business, which is select board reports and the town administrator report.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any proposed revisions to the agenda as read? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of it.
Second.
Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. So we'll start with the Farm Pond Advisory. I'm not sure who's, Melinda's not here. Who's gonna? I see you, Terry. I don't know, or I guess Beth is the proposal for Farm Pond. Is there someone presenting that?
Um, I got an email from Catherine Rokio asking to, if we could appoint Beth Jonas to the Farm Pond Advisory Committee, so she has the support of the Farm Pond Advisory Committee.
So can I make a motion?
Go ahead.
To appoint Beth Jonas for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Thank you. And then the next one is CONCOM, and I think Michael Lester's here. Do you wanna make the presentation, Matt? Michael, I see Terry is also here.
Yeah, I guess she could speak for herself if she wants.
Well, do you wanna make the proposal and then we'll let her speak if.
Sure, as you should have received, the select board voted, I mean, the Conservation Commission voted last week to unanimously recommend her to fill the open spot on the Conservation Commission. She has the, I think she'll be a good addition, has some good skills and the right mindset for this. And she's also taken the initiative and done a lot of training with the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners. So she, and she's already a associate member. So it would be a great addition.
Excellent. Yeah, your back, I read your background too, Terry. Do you wanna just say quickly hi to the select board? Introduce yourself? We got your bio or your application, so.
Um, it's, it's a wonderful extension of the master gardener training I've had to sort of make a contribution to it, you know, the Sherburne community rather than just those particular gardens that master gardeners volunteer in.
Okay.
So can I make a motion?
Go ahead, Paul.
Can I move to appoint Teresa Luskin to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
I'm just gonna abstain because Courtney's on the commission.
All right, Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. So we're four, zero, one, I guess you'd call it. Diane?
Hmm.
Thank you very much for volunteering, Terry.
Thanks.
Everybody.
Jackie, we're up to early voting hours.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Jeff. So I'm asking the board to allow me to have early voting during the week, Monday through Friday, from nine in the morning till 12 noon. Um, we, the normal thing is for early voting is the hours that you are open, but based on the number of voters, we are allowed to lessen it, provided the select board will approve it. And one of the reasons that I want that is that'll give us time to get in at eight, upload the poll pads, get ready, and then we also are required to process all of the ballots that day. So it'll give us time in the afternoon. And frankly, because of early vote mail is permanent, it, early voting in person is very quiet. And on the Saturday before the election, which is the 24th, I'll probably be open for six hours. I'm only required to be open two. So I think there'll be plenty of opportunity for voters to come in and vote in person early if they would like to.
Yeah, I think this is a really sensible plan because I've been there when it was kind of quiet. So do you wanna make a motion, Paul?
Yes, can I move that we approve the early voting hours for the March 5th, 2024 presidential primary as presented by the town clerk?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Eric?
I just wanna give a personal, just one point of comment. I support this fully. I urge people caution because the one year I did it on a primary vote, but by the time the actual election happened, my candidate dropped out. My vote early, so. Caution to have for people who do their own.
It might drop out.
Aye.
All right, Stephen?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Jeremy is our discussion of the meetings and recordings, and we have the one, a couple of documents that Diane submitted, minutes from our meeting and our vote previously, as well as the email communication that the previous town administrator sent out. So do you wanna lead us through the discussion?
Sure, this continuation of a discussion that you started a couple of meetings ago regarding your policy on meeting transparency and the policy that a prior board implemented in 2021. That, that policy, if you recall, did, did sort of, it was a policy of the select board itself, but also required the ZBA and Conservation Commission, the two bodies that the select board appoint, to, to use virtual meetings and to record those meetings. It, that policy at the time highly recommended that the other regulatory bodies of the town follow the same model, but it was a strong recommendation on a requirement. You talked at your last meeting or two meetings ago about this. We have reached out to other communities and got a little bit of feedback. I did reach out to two listservs that I'm on. Didn't get a whole lot of feedback, but I did hear back from Norwood, Easton, West Hampton, Clarksburg, and also Marion reached out and through the MAPC got some input from Wellesley, Marlborough, Malden, which, you know, Marion can help give a little more detail on, but many of the towns that, you know, of the four that responded to were very small towns and indicated that they have gone back to in-person meetings, that being West Hampton and Clarksburg. Easton, somewhat similar community as Sherburne. It's not a written policy, however, it is a standard practice that all of the regulatory boards are filmed on their public access TV channel. It's a, it's not written, but that's their general practice that, that all regulatory boards, regardless of the appointment, are filmed and using their public access TV. Norwood, larger community, generally leaves that to their regulatory boards. Marion, do you wanna mention what you've gotten from, from most of the communities?
Wellesley is actually working on this. And the person I know on their select board happens to be the chair of a governance committee that is dealing with this. So they're very interested in what we're gonna do. Right now, their plan is, they do have in their, I think it's in their bylaws, that the select board shall promulgate regulations pertaining to live streaming and recorded video of meetings of elected and appointed bodies provided. And this is kind of an interesting one that I noted because we haven't dealt with that, that the regulation so adopted shall not infringe on an individual's right to make a video or audio recording of an open meeting, open session of a meeting of a public body. And that struck me because I have been at meetings in which the chair admonished people and refused to allow people to make any kind of recording at all with their cellphone. So Wellesley already permits that. But basically, most of Wellesley's meetings of all, all boards are on Zoom, she said, but not all. And they're, they're working on getting hybrid in place. Their town hall is currently being refurbished, so they're meeting all over town. And their plan is when they get back to town hall to make it clear.
Yeah, their town, their town hall's on Route 9 right now, actually.
Oh, really?
They're temporary town hall. They had that, they actually relocated.
But I thought it was really interesting, the, the document that I think Jeremy sent around from the state legislation that was passed last spring, I think, extending the COVID, the COVID rules on access to meetings and remote meetings. Basically, the AG and the state is strongly encouraging all public boards to allow access to their meetings either online or personal, if it's impersonal. And, and they're allowing all boards to meet remotely, as you know. So that's already in, in state law. Boards can meet remotely. Of course, they're not obliged to always meet remotely. But I think the, the language from the state is really quite clear. It says, I'll just read one sentence from one of the paragraphs. However, in light of the various free and low-cost methods that could be used to provide the public with real-time access, the Division of Open Government strongly recommends that a municipal public body consult with our office before determining that it is unable to provide the public with real-time access. And in other parts of it, it strongly, it strongly promotes the use of remote access as well. So I thought that now we have, we have the, the hybrid technology in place. It's quite usable in town hall where virtually all the regulatory body meetings are held, that I thought we might strengthen our policy statement a little bit more than what David Williams wrote back in 2021 when we had, when very few Zoom meetings were being used and we certainly had no hybrid. To, to, if we can't require at least strongly promote the use of Zoom and hybrid, I haven't heard any reasons that a, a committee cannot do that. So I wouldn't say.
I guess the only thing I would say is how are you considering, you know, in the past, we would have some meetings, not all, recorded, but live broadcast also. So that's sort of a hybrid of what, what your hybrid is. In other words, it doesn't allow people to participate remotely, but they can hear the entire discussion remotely, and it's then recorded, in our case, by Dover Sherburne Cable TV, so it can be viewed later, but it doesn't achieve the remote participation component.
Right, you're right, Jeff. That's, that's kind of the hybrid that's not a hybrid. That is, you can watch while it's happening and you can see it afterwards. And that actually was a strong statement in the policy that select board passed back in 2021. Let me see if I can find the exact.
I don't think you need to. I guess, I think that's when the thing we need, I don't know that we should, we can debate. I don't know if we need to decide tonight, but I, I don't know whether we should require hybrid meetings or just require that people have access to view it and for them all to be recorded. I, I think it would be problematic to force everyone to use Zoom and probably unnecessary because we probably only have a few, a very small few meetings that aren't already handled properly. But if we had some committees that wanted to meet in person, and I know there, there, there are a lot of people that wanna meet in person, we could either make it be a hybrid or just have Rick Trere come in and film that particular session regularly, not just an, and have it be, I think the key is having it be available on YouTube because there's other, for example, you know, CONCOM may wanna watch a Planning Board or Board of Health meeting, so not being able to view it after the fact is problematic.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jeff. I mean, what I was trying to say is that I think our policy should be that all regulatory board meetings should be recorded and available.
Yeah, I think that's a good, yeah. Let's, let's, let's get Jackie's input and then let's decide among the select board if we wanna maybe not make a decision tonight, but get a group together to propose something. Go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make a comment on what I heard Marion say about one of, that some chairs were not allowing people to record.
Yeah.
I just wanna briefly let you know because I had a resident reach out to me about that, and just, this'll be quick. Mass General Law, chapter 30a, section 20f. After notifying the chair of a public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number of placement and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform the attendees of any recordings. So Mass General Law says that people should be able, if it's not on Zoom and, and people are concerned about what's being said, that they should be able, they are allowed per Mass General Law to record the meeting. So.
It doesn't even mention Zoom. In other words, they could do it also. If it's on Zoom, they could still do it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's just that they have the right to record.
They, sorry, but what you said just now, Jackie, is that they have to inform the chair?
They just, they notify the chair. It doesn't say, and Paul can, 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 you know, expound on this, but it doesn't say that the chair can say no. It just says that they have to notify the chair and that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body.
It doesn't say when either. I've had, I've been in meetings many times where they did it at the start of the meeting. In other words, it doesn't say you have to notify the chair, you know, 48 hours in advance or anything either.
Correct. Right. Just says at the beginning of the meeting, the chair, the chair shall inform the other attendees of any recordings. So just so everybody, everyone knows that it's being recorded, whether it's on iPhone or something else.
Eric, you were gonna say something?
I was gonna say, honestly, it makes sense. I'm surprised it even has to be stated. I guess everything has to be stated. It's a meeting. It's open public. You can record. I can't believe we even have to even specify it. I can't believe actually they was even back on that. That's.
Well, I've been at a meeting at which a, an attendee was actually ejected from the meeting for trying to record on his cellphone. So.
I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. It sounds like it breaks three laws right then.
Yeah, that's quite illegal.
Exactly.
We are a little careful when we record. You know, Rick always puts a sign on the door letting people come in. So I think the chair, we should encourage them to maybe, if new people enter the room, announce that it's being recorded, just so that no one's unaware.
We recommend we put it on the door, so nobody can enter without seeing a statement that it's being recorded.
It works well when it's planned in advance and Dover Sherburne Cable TV is doing the recording. But if an individual attendee does it, sometimes there isn't really anyone there to put a sign on the door, but yes, that's a good idea. So did you wanna add something, Michael?
Yeah, I guess I was, just a little tidbit on the last point. I was gonna say something, ask something else, but yeah, at the Conservation Commission years ago, right, people would often come in to record what was going on and, right, the, to us, it was, right, a no-brainer that basically they could do it, but the issue was telling everybody who came in afterwards that, that it was being recorded, and even when we're doing it in Zoom, that it's, that it's that way. I guess, I wasn't clear if I understood everything that Marion was reading and whatever, what you guys are even, all of you are considering. Is, is the option to always continue with a Zoom meeting that's being recorded? Is that always on the table in what you're considering? You're not requiring everybody to do a hybrid or something like that?
Uh, so are, I'm not even sure I understand your, are you saying that would we require you to have somebody be in person as opposed to entirely virtual?
I'm just trying to understand whether that's part of your.
No, I don't think we're saying that.
Fully Zoom is always still an option. I think we're trying to eliminate the fully in-person with no recording or streaming.
That's what I, I just wanted to be sure because it's turned out to be very useful.
So that's, Jeff, that's one question I have is that if we wanted Dover Sherburne Cable to record a meeting, what kinda, what kinda lead time do they need to know to be there? And then what is the cost per, I mean, how do they charge? Is it per hour, per?
We can find that out. In the past, what happened was, the select board has always been recorded and there was a lot of controversy about six or seven years ago, as you probably recall with the Board of Health, particularly around the fields of Sherburne project. So what happened is we basically recorded every, there's only one recording device. So we recorded every select board meeting and every Board of Health meeting for a long, long time. And so they didn't have to notify anyone. They just, they have the schedule and they record those meetings. We directed, always record those two sessions. And then the other one that got recorded most often was ZBA because they're really, you know, pulling together reviews of 40B projects, so I always felt that that was important also.
To follow up on Steve's comment, though, it really does cost us something. And there's the scheduling, the scheduling issue that is the chair of whatever board or regulatory board has to know to call Rick to line it up to make sure it's gonna happen.
Not if we do every one of their meetings. Rick just goes to the, Rick does, Rick records a ton of meetings in Dover also.
Okay, well, select board and CONCOM often have meetings at the same time. So what do we do then? I mean, I think if, in that respect, since we have the technology, Zoom meetings are so easy to do. We've got the hybrid technology. Whether or not the chair knows how to set it up, somebody can help. And Zoom doesn't cost us anything, I think, to put it.
I'm not sure the other does either. It could be covered in there, you know, they're required to cover municipal government. I'm not sure. Go ahead, Jeremy, if you wanna.
Yeah, in the, the agreement with the cable, cable access channel, they are obligated to, to record in all Sherburne School Committee meetings, Sherburne Select Board meetings, and use the best effort to cablecast any other public meetings that are in the public interest to be broadcast as determined by the Board of Selectmen of the town of Sherburne. So I think, you know, part of that agreement, you do have the, the ability to request them to record other meetings in addition to yours, and since you're not using them to record your meetings, you know, that capacity should be there.
Yeah. So could we do something like, say, you know, strongly encourage every public body in Sherburne to, you know, to have hot Zoom or hybrid or otherwise accessible meetings? And then furthermore, say, all right, we'll list out the regulatory boards and say, all of these boards, if you have an in-person meeting where you are not doing it hybrid, that the, the town will have Dover Sherburne Cable record your meeting. So it's, it's not really the chairs, the chair cannot decide to not have the recording because we have decided that we're gonna call in Dover Sherburne Cable to record it for you if you don't do it yourself.
Yes, and we basically did that two years ago, except for two exceptions that Jeremy just read. One was the Planning Board and one, I think, was the Board of Health, wasn't it? Was the other one, Jeremy? We allowed them the discretion. We didn't really allow other boards to have the discretion. So I don't think we need to decide this tonight. My suggestion is why don't we see if two members of the select board wanna just work with Jeremy and come up with a proposed language or just review it at our next meeting? Does that make sense? I don't think it's gonna take a lot of work because I don't think it's gonna be. What do you think, Paul?
Just one comment that back when we voted the 2021 guidelines.
Yeah.
We also delegated it to the town administrator to enforce and to implement. Because there are some, some committees that don't know how to do something, or they don't have a Jeff Waldron who knows how to use Zoom. But the town administrator then took on the title of IT officer or whatever because he was implementing this.
Yes.
And because there's that, that vote that the town administrator's responsible for this.
Yes.
Why not leave all this to the town administrator? To work with the different committees, make sure that they have what they need, do whatever training needs to be done, and take the, the message here that we think that should be hybrid, at least if you're in person, that things be recorded and implemented. Why, why do we have to have all these meetings of the select board to deal with an issue that's basically already been decided?
It hasn't been decided is the reason why, Paul. We decided to not decide on the Board of Health and the Planning Board.
That's right.
No, but we had recommended that they do so.
We recommended it, but we, we need to move beyond recommendations because we have a problem with a board that's not following the recommendations at all.
But that's, again, for the town administrator to take care of, I don't see that we need to get involved in that.
Well, we'll see. I think we need to be, make a stronger policy because we just recommended those two. The town administrator can't enforce something that we recommended. If they decide not to do it, we only recommended it. We did not require that all the regulatory boards do it. I think we need to, I think we need to modify our language slightly, and then everything you said, I agree with. We'll have the town administrator.
We can't require, as I think I said before legally, you can't require other elected boards to do something that they're not willing to do. That's between them and the people. You have to do that by bylaw. And if you notice the survey that Jeremy did and, and Marion did, you don't have boards of selectmen bossing other boards, committees around. It's just, you don't have that power unless you do a charter and you create all kinds of other functions. But you do have a town administrator. But you do have a town administrator, and I, I agree with the suggestion that the wording could be stronger to say strongly encouraged and so on and on.
All right.
You, you can't, you know, find the chairman of the board of something, three hundred dollars, because he won't obey. You just, you, you, and you can't remove them from office, so.
But he also can't stop us from recording his meeting.
That's right.
No, you can't.
Right, so.
Unless you change the location to where there's no recording option, you change like the police station or change it to.
But the police station has hybrid technology in there, right?
It does, but it doesn't have Dover Sherburne Cable TV.
Rick can't just show up and like record it. I was thinking with the other one, Rick could just show up and be like, I'm recording this. Um, do you mind if I, so just a quick thing, I'd like to just ask the board, um, is there an appetite to actually um, pass a bylaw? Propose a bylaw, we could still open the uh, warrant, we could actually put something in there, or just wait till the next year, or maybe sooner, whatever. Is there, is there any appetite to actually make a bylaw? I guess step, I gotta plug in my phone, my computer. I can still hear everyone.
I'm, I'm, uh, I'm fine doing it. I just seems like maybe overkill, because we really only have one challenging situation. I, I think my approach would be to maybe strengthen the language, however Paul feels we can strengthen it without making it mandatory, because we can't do that for elected boards. And then see that if uh, you know, Jeremy can uh, cause uh, favorable outcomes for the boards that aren't providing this capability. Is that, how do people feel to Eric's proposal? Would you wanna create a bylaw?
I think it's worth a, a go at it. I think for now, you know, the time is very short to create a bylaw. The, the deadline for town meeting is like uh, two weeks away. Uh, so, I mean, I'm, I would be perfectly happy if we just uh, reiterate uh, what was said in twenty twenty-one with the extra uh, with the extra recommendation that all board, I think we should require that all meetings be recorded, because that's what the state guidance is. And I think we should do it. Um, even though maybe, you know, some board will take us to court, I don't think so. I think we can require that all meetings be recorded and available to the public. Uh, and or uh, a, and that um, access to meetings uh, should be as broad as possible, including hybr, encouraging hybrid meetings, not that we have the technology. And uh, basically, opening up our meetings as much as possible. And I know it's only one board's problem. But uh, that one board really hasn't responded to requests to uh, allow reporting. So I think a stronger policy is needed right now, even if it's mostly a reiteration.
It does make sense to, to, to republizize the policy, because I remember voting on it four years ago. And there's been a lot of turnover, new people on boards, you know, we keep appointing people every year. It does make sense to take these policies and send out memos from the town administrator to every board and committee in, in, in the town. Make it known. And maybe as part of uh, uh, when people come to get sworn in, maybe we, we could have ask the town clerk to give every board member a piece of paper about like we do in another town that I represent, they, they have this, this sheet of paper about the, the duties of, of being a board member. And there's all kinds of things in there, but one of them would be your, your right to record, the use of Zoom, all, all that stuff could be added to that kind of thing and given to people as they, as they get sworn in.
I don't think in this case, though, it's actually about education. I think it's just someone that does.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's pretty clear what the situation is, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with not doing a bylaw for now and altering our policy, but there, there needs to be a stick to swing. And if the stick that we swing is simply that, um, we will record it for you, I'm, I'm okay with that.
That's fine. So uh, would it make sense maybe for uh, Jeremy and Marion, for the two of you to just sort of revise the language like Paul described, and we'll just make it be a little bit more um, forceful perhaps? And then maybe I'll have another discussion with certain members to try and encourage uh, uh, implementation. Does that make sense?
I'm perfectly willing to do that, Eric. Oh, I have something more to say.
Go ahead, Eric.
Just two questions. One, so has anyone talked to this chair?
I have. I had a two-hour meeting with this chair.
Okay, that's good. That was Sean's question there. I know, I know. My second is, um, what is, I'm not always clear if the empowerment of a chair is over the entire board. Can we, because I know some of the board members can ask to be, request an agenda item, take a vote. And if they vote in opposite of the chair and actually vote that their meetings get recorded, can't the board itself as an entire, or all five members actually just make a motion and vote to make it happen and force that to happen? It's not in a discretion of the chair anymore?
Yeah, that's a good point, Eric.
That's what I recommend. I recommend someone, maybe myself, reach out to the vice chair. If you're on this.
We already had this discussion in a executive session.
Yeah.
On a different topic.
Anyone else who wants to work with me and Jeremy, you're, you're totally welcome. But uh, we could uh, write something like that into our policy statement to the uh, chairs of boards uh, saying, for example, that if a majority of the board uh, wishes to use hybrid or uh, you know, I mean, uh, that, we have to have teeth in the recording part. I mean, meetings have to be available after the fact, but um, let's give some power to the other members of the boards, because the boards of five members are five equal members.
Yeah, I think their votes will, will write a chair in almost all circumstances.
All right, so uh, Addie May has her hand up. Go ahead, Addie.
Just real quick, um, the statement that Jackie Morris read, read about the um, state bylaw for recording, allowing recording was, is um, something as part of, you know, discussed education. Everyone should be educated on that, and I think that's valuable. And all the more reason why we would want to have recordings of our own meetings, so um, someone else's recording isn't out there getting selectively edited, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's true, and distributed. All right, so I, I still think it's worth strengthening our language a little bit. I don't think we can make it mandatory for regulatory boards that are elected, but we can cause it to happen. And I, as the last measure, use Stevens' approach to just basically showing up a candid camera and start filming. So we'll call Alan Fund of Battle Retirement. I think he passed away though, but. Does that make sense to everyone? I think we, I think we can handle this. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So uh, you're up, Jeremy, and then the three chiefs and DPW director on um, uh, the operating budget is the next agenda item.
Yep, uh, thanks, Jeff. I'm gonna share my screen. So at your last meeting, we started talking about how the select board would like to review the various operating budgets for FY twenty-five. Um, and we thought that giving a, a summary of the overall budget at this meeting uh, might allow you to get some context, and then you could further discuss how you'd like to go forward with your budget reviews. Uh, I did ask the two chiefs and Sean to come tonight, so they could touch on, you know, those being the three largest budgets that, that roll up directly under the select board. Um, and I'll give some, a summary of the various other budgets, and you have the full budget detail of those budgets as well, but last night at the advisory committee, I gave a similar presentation of this, the budget roll-up um, and wanted to make sure also the select board um, had the, the opportunity to hear the same. So I'm just sharing my screen here. There we go. Can you see that?
Yep.
Um, so, um, last budget season, you know, for the current fiscal year we're in, um, I started partway through that budget cycle. So um, though saw a majority of it and was able to make some observations and, and got a, get a feel for how um, Sherburne has typically done um, your budget setting. And also got a feel for the, the budget model that had been used and how the, the budgets have been aggregated together. Um, and, you know, through that, um, you know, watching and, and learning process and multiple conversations with various folks, um, I, I've suggested that we've, we added a bit to the process this year. In that, um, we have offered um, the town administrator, the finance director to help compile um, the budgets sooner and, and represent a, a more compiled, complete budget earlier in the process that um, the town ministry and the finance director kind of own that model, um, that we can keep updated and, and not have that um, be as, as much of a responsibility for advisory. They, they sure certainly could do that and, and, and will, will do that if they desire, but uh, we wanted to provide some more assistance for uh, that volunteer committee um, to have more timely information and help with the budget review process. So um, in November, advisory put out their budget recommendation um, guidance letter. Uh, and then in December, uh, we requested all the budgets from the very bu, various budget makers be submitted to the finance director, um, Deb uh, and myself. And then in December, prior to the budgets being published, um, Diane, Deb and I met with all the various budget makers to help them understand um, the advisory's guidance and put together their budgets, and also to get a sense of how they all might kind of fit together. Um, and then also uh, we created an updated budget model, um, which I liked for a few, few reasons in that, um, this updated budget model, which was in the memorandum that was sent out um, in this, on December thirty-first to the advisory and select board. Uh, that contained, it was a three-page budget model that, that contained not only the expenses, but also the revenue side of a budget. And a budget's not complete unless you've got those two sides. You need the revenues to pay for your expenses and the two have to work together. Um, and in the end, um, it, they need to be balanced. So the, and that budget model also includes, there's a number of uh, of expenses that town meeting does not need to vote. Um, that are still part of the finances of the community, so that budget model accounts for those. Um, and also accounts for not only the, the department budgets, but also lists out the financial warrant articles in uh, in town meeting in the budget model. So it, it, it hopefully is a more complete model. And it also has a very clear calculation of the, the property tax levy limit and the impact of this draft budget on property taxes. So we'll get into that in a little bit more detail, but just for a little background, I know three of you have been on the advisory committee in the past. Um, so this may be a little repetitive, but maybe you'll glean a little bit of information, but um, in Sherburne, there is no town charter. In, in some communities, there is a charter that's their form of government that uh, that builds upon mass general law and, and clarifies the responsibilities of the select board or the town administrator or the town manager, you know, and may in many cases give some requirements that that town administrator or town manager is required to put together and submit a budget, and it's, it's actually the town manager's budget that gets submitted to the various boards. Um, that's not the case in Sherburne. Sherburne's government structure is not, uh, not set up that way, in that it doesn't have a charter. Um, you do have a board of selectmen or select board, but that's essentially the default to mass general law, not as expanded upon by its charter. And the town has bylaws that are separate from a charter. They have town, it's your town bylaws that give some uh, authorities or some um, you know, job description or, or activities to the town administrator, to your finance director, town accountant, and to the advisory. Um, in addition to the select board, as the chief uh, elected officials and, and executive officers, and you also, you know, hire the downtown administrator to do your daily um, operations of the town, can generally manage the property and fair, affairs of the town on a daily basis. But in your, in your bylaws, it, it's not, there's not a clear budget responsibility of the town administrator or the finance director, other than helping uh, advisory compile the budgets uh, that then get uh, recommended at a town meeting. So the, you know, this, this budget memo that I've put together and the, the summary budget is technically, that's not a town administrator budget. It's, it's us helping advisory put together a summary of the budget and a holistic budget that, that all fits together. And hopefully doing so in a manner that's consistent with your town financial policies that were adopted by the select board and advisory in two thousand twenty-one, which generally have principles here um, outlined. It doesn't go in a great deal of detail as far as how budgets are developed, but it does give guidance as far as what should be, you know, put into the budgets and the considerations that go into budgets, um, which generally form the basis of what the advisory guidance letter is. And in this case, for this year, advisory uh, upon some recommendation of the personnel board, put forward a guidance for three and a half percent COLA for all municipal employees, non-union, so that would be all employees, except for the police and public works union. And teachers, obviously. And if some other individuals had a contract that was different, but is do have a tie-in to the COLA that's um, recommended for town meeting. And also, so that's from the salary side was the advisor's recommendation, and they also recommended essentially a level service for expenses, though with a goal to level fund with um, information, uh, more information provided where we couldn't level fund, but where we, we needed to, to, you know, the increased expenses required us to um, increase the budget to provide for a level service. So when we met with all of the budget makers, you know, we made, you know, we're re-reiterating advisory's guidance. All of those budgets have, have been submitted, obviously, and compiled into the new budget model. Um, and as submitted, um, the summary is on the screen here of what's been submitted by the school department, the various town government departments, and the undistributed expenses. And we divided those out differently, the undistributed expenses, because those aren't all attributed to town government. Um, a good portion of those are also attributed to the school department. Um, the undistributed expenses are things that are best to budget for in the aggregate and not spread out through um, the various department budgets. Uh, for instance, the health insurance budget line, uh, all the teachers at Pine Hill Elementary School uh, receive, if they so desire, they receive health insurance through the town's insurance, not through the school budget, but through the town's budget. Uh, additionally, debt service for school projects is carried on, under the overall debt service for the, for the community. Um, but the Pine Hill Elementary School budget, as submitted by the school board, their version one point oh, is proposing an eight point one-three percent increase over two thousand twenty-four. Uh, so the columns up here, you have the approved budget for FY twenty-four, approved at town meeting. The draft FY twenty-five budgets has been, has submitted and as currently um, under review at advisory. The dollar change um, from FY twenty-four to twenty-five and the percent change. That's what you see in the columns. Starting on the top is the education with the Pine Hill Elementary School. The Dover Sherburne Regional uh, assessment for middle school and high school is currently a proposal to increase by six percent. The overall education proposal of dollar amount is about one point three million dollars um, in a, uh, additional uh, budget from the prior year. Town government, which is all the general town offices, police, fire and public works. Uh, in aggregate, has, is, as submitted is a three point seven-three percent increase, or three hundred thousand dollars in, in total. Um, and then uh, of a note, our, our health insurance and the Middlesex County Retirement Assessment. The retirement assessment is, is a, generally a standard six percent increase to help fund the unfunded um, liability that's out there for older employees. Generally newer employees are paying a higher percentage to the system and, and essentially self-funding, but that um, about twelve million dollar liability that that Sherburne has for the pension system, there is a goal to have that funded within a certain timeframe. Um, and to do that, there's an assessment that's charged each year, um, and that's gone up six percent, um, and will continue to go up six percent. The health insurance provider uh, that we currently use, Maya, has suggested that we use an eight and a half percent increase as our estimate. We'll, we'll get better numbers. Um, often at the MMA annual public meeting, our uh, annual meeting, they'll start to give some more refined numbers. Maybe that will come down a little bit, but still it's a fairly big increase, amounting to, you know, an additional budget uh, request of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And that sums up to be uh, an overall budget increase of five point six eight percent. And you, you know, on an additional budget of one point eight million. And to do that, um, This is a balanced budget in that. The town is in a position to fund that additional cost, that five point eight percent additional costs as proposed. However, to do so, you've got essentially three mainstreams of revenue to pay for those expenses. Your property tax levy, local receipts and state aid. Your state aid. Is a relatively small portion of your budget, I mean, about three to four percent of your budget is state aid, that's relatively low compared to many other communities. Which kind of shields you a little bit from the current nine C cuts that that are happening or. Currently not affecting the school aid or under unrestricted government aid. But in in past years, sometimes they have, but being a small percentage of your budget. Should those things be cut, you're you're some you're more insulated some other communities. Your local receipts are your fees, your registration, car registrations. You know, more to do with the economic activity in the community. That again is also a relatively small percentage of your budget compared to some other communities. The largest piece of your revenue is your property taxes, and you all know that it's about ninety percent of your budget is funded by property taxes. And and yes. The the if this budget was approved, the town could without an override. Increase the property tax levy by the five point eight percent that would be required to fund this budget. Without the need of an override. And you know, that leads to the question, well, wait, what about Prop two and a half? I thought my property tax can't go up two and a half percent. Well, that's. The two and a half percent applies to. The prior year levy limit, it doesn't occlude to the actual appropriation. So here's a calculation of for FY twenty four, what that levy limit calculation looks like. So to. You start with last year's FY twenty four or this current fiscal year. Levy limit, which is twenty eight point nine million. That's the levy limit. That's not the actual levy, you you your budget didn't need all of that for this year, so. But that's the levy limit that you start with for the calculation, you add the two and a half percent increase that's allowed by Prop two and a half, that's the two and a half of. Prop two and a half. Add in new growth and then you come up with a new levy limit for FY twenty five. That is twenty nine point eight five million. And then you add your debt exclusions and then that you arrive at your maximum allowable allowable levy. And then per that budget model that you have and all of the submitted budgets, the actual property tax levy. That would need to be assessed to to fund the to draft FY twenty five budget is thirty one million. Thirty one point eight million. Which is less than the maximum allowable levy. Which means you you are left with some excess levy capacity. Should this budget be approved? As as presented. You would be left with a hundred and twenty two thousand seven hundred and seventy eight dollars in excess levy capacity, that sounds good, however. That's a big reduction in the excess capacity. That you've had in prior years. So you know, the the story of your budgets over the last several years have been. A. Fairly sharp reduction in the excess levy capacity that you've had available. Year over year. You know, from FY nineteen to FY twenty two, you were actually building excess levy capacity, so. Your levy limit was growing. More than your budget was growing, so the excess levy was was building. Now. Since FY twenty two, for the last several budget years, you've been using. At more budget than your excess levy capacity has grown. Or more more than your level of limit has grown, so your excess levy capacity has decreased. So the the fear and the worry is that once you get, once you run out of your excess levy capacity. Then you are bound year over year to the limits of Prop two and a half, two and a half percent plus new growth. Or you must vote an override, so. With this, as as proposed, this budget gets you closer to an override in future years or more constrained spending in future years. And. Actually, Dan Sickle, Chair of the Advisory, put this chart together and it it does help illuminate. You know, one of the the context of why this may be happening and that with recent cost inflation. In in expenses and wages. There's been a whole lot more pressure put on town budgets in general, not just Sherburne's, but all over, and I'm sure your budgets as well at home. And what this shows here. In black, the black line is the actual operating budget that was approved each fiscal year. And then the orange line was kind of normalizing the FY twelve to FY twelve budget. And and accounting for. Local price index and you can see it tracks fairly closely, which means your budgets have tracked somewhat closely to inflation. Just kind of showing that. You know, in the in the context of your budgets, you haven't you haven't been doing anything very extreme and you can see how. Just to provide level service that the the costs have have gone up to do so. As proposed, the FY twenty five expenditure, here's the the pie, the pieces of the pie for each of the various functions of the community. Direct budget for the schools is fifty eight percent of your budget. General town government, public works, public safety, direct budgets are about twenty five percent. Of the the overall budget. Insurance benefits eleven percent. And I have almost half of that. You know, insurance and benefits is attributed to the schools and about half to the local municipal government. And then your dead and dead and interest budget is five point three percent of your total budget. Which compared to other communities is not bad, that's a relatively, that's low on the lower side. But it but that's good, you know, and some of that debt is attributed to the schools about twenty five percent. And the rest to general town. Projects. Drooling in a little bit more in detail and what the budget proposes, you know, there's an education increase of one point three million overall, a six point nine percent increase. Town government, including police, fire, public works and general town. Departments, an increase of three point seven three percent. Which in general, in aggregate, is fairly close to advisory's guidance. And that increase is divided out into salaries and expenses. Seventy percent of the town government budgets are salary related, thirty percent expenses. The salary. Component of the increases as the is because of the cola and that amounts to two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And the expenses are are up. By eighty six thousand dollars and we'll get into a little more detail on those or some of the budget drivers later. I'm in a little bit more detail on the undistributed expenses. The general town property insurance is another thing that also has some attribution to schools, the Pine Hill Elementary School. Insurance, property insurance is is funded in the in the undistributed expenses. As well as the property insurance for the police department, library, all of that. And our carrier is recommending a ten percent increase. For those policies. Where the town general government departments, here are some of the general budget drivers. Obviously, the cola. The longevity pay, which was a program approved at last town meeting, was funded for the first year in FY twenty four out of free cash. Now it's being proposed to be built into the FY twenty five budgets of the various departments. We've proposed an increase in the senior tax credit program that's in the select board budget. We'd like to increase that by an additional five hun- five thousand five hundred dollars. The budgets presented fund the conservation and town planner positions. At the level of effort that was approved in FY twenty four, but with some market salary adjustment. It level funds the sustainability quote department. And that those two part-time positions are currently vacant, but the FY twenty five budget carries that as a as a level funded, it it carries some. Some resources for that. But does not have any any specific change. We've been talking with the Energy and Sustainability Committee on what. We might bring forward as a proposal for for those staffing positions, so. There'll be more to come before the select board on on the sustainability positions. The budget funds the obligations of the police officer union contract, we're in the midst of that three-year contract. It funds the ambulance services budget. At level service, but it corrects an overstated estimate revenue in the revolving fund for the ambulance. So your your ambulance services, there's a portion that's in the general funded budget and also a revolving fund. Those two together form the the full funding for your ambulance services. The revolving account had, it was an overestimate. Of about thirty five thousand dollars per year in revenue. So we've been seeing a shortfall in revenue. And that's why you've been seeing the sort of the the after the fact makeup budget request. At town meeting. And. We felt that as you're getting closer to your levy limit. It was it was best to correct that, essentially correct that structural budget deficit before you got much closer to your levy limit. So that thirty five thousand dollars in revenue that had been. Forecasted but not actually received. And the revolving account. We are have built into the operating budget, so that's that's the. The biggest increase that you see there. On the ambulance services budget and actually the three and a half percent cola has the one of the biggest effects on the fire department, they have one of the largest salaries that are non-union. So that cola. Does increase the fire department fairly significantly compared to some of the other budgets. There's some assumptions built in the budget for the public works union negotiations. The Board of Health budget, they're requesting some additional hours for their administrative assistant. And and certainly now with with Ellen announcing her retirement. There may be some opportunities there to consider in the the staffing and organization of that department. And the Recreation Commission budget does not show any increase, but they're proposing to combine two part-time positions to make it. Essentially a full-time position that might be better eligible. Then on the expense side of the town government budgets. The assessor's office is including some funds for a parcel database and map update. We've been fortunate to receive some grants in the past to help with that, Wendy had gotten some grants over the years. That that have now run out and she had a capital appropriation a number of years ago as well that she has a small balance left in. But those is like fifteen hundred dollars left. But the cost to do this annually. Is a little over three thousand dollars and so it's built now being proposed to be built into the assessor's department budget so that. All the parcels and parcel and ownership information, all the information and data. That the assessor creates and updates every year is is. Would be made available to to everyone that needs it. The accounting department budget includes the cost for the OPEB audit that we're required to do every year, every other year. So last year that was not in the budget this year for FY twenty five, it would be. The elections budget includes expenses for the presidential election and. The the lead-up election to that. Town clerk leaves, it's gonna be a busy year since some medicinal expenses for the elections and the primaries. The information technology budget includes some additional expenses for cybersecurity and software licensing. The municipal energy budget has, you know, carries your energy costs, fortunately. We did find some savings there because of the supply contracts that we entered into, so there has been some savings. Reductions in the energy cost because of those supply contracts. That have been more than offset than some additional. Maintenance requirements for other town buildings, in particular the library. Now that that's been turned over essentially to the town to maintain, there's some things that need to be done each year to make sure that that stays in a state of good repair. The fire department includes some budget for medical exam for firefighters. And the solid waste recycling and transfer station operation contracts are due, so we've got some assumptions for the renewal. Of those contracts for FY twenty five. And the council on aging budget includes an additional cost for the rental of space. For their recently, the sit and sip program that they've recently started. And also in the budget model, we have included the general, the monetary articles that are generally included at town meeting. A two hundred thousand dollar contribution to the OPEB trust fund. A fifty thousand dollar contribution to the general stabilization fund, a hundred thousand dollars to the capital stabilization fund. And also currently, the capital budget proposes to use three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars in free cash to fund capital. The far right column shows the balances that are in those various funds or trusts. And. Slide here gives you sort of some of the the background as far as the history of your reserves and your stabilization funds. And the guidance that's in your financial policies. So your financial policies say that your stabilization fund should have a minimum of two percent of your operating budget and target three percent. The chart on the left here on the bottom line, the the red square line is the stabilization fund, you can see you're 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 over the two percent minimum. And approaching the three percent target, you haven't quite got there yet. And as your budget increases every year. You you need to to maintain that percentage by the the financial policies, you need to contribute and that's what's being proposed. Your. It shows your free cash here, history from two thousand eight to current, you can see. That is not a very predictable source of revenue, it's very erratic. Based on many different factors. But your. Financial policies. Have a minimum of to maintain a minimum of three percent. Of of your operating budget in free cash and target a five percent. And you can see that the orange line that's in the middle of this left chart, you're you've accomplished that per year. Financial recommendations, but. Also recall that once you use free cash to fund capital, you're 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 taken away from that balance. And then I'm just gonna finish on this slide here and then let Sean and the chiefs give more detail on their bigger budgets, but. Here's a summary of all of the budgets that generally roll up through the select board. And showing whether they meet advisory's guidance. In our opinion, or if they don't, for what reason. So the select board office. Doesn't technically meet advisory's guidance because we're adding. Five thousand five hundred dollars to the senior tax credit program, that's essentially doubling the amount available. Legal counsel meets guidance because it's level funded. The assessor's office doesn't meet guidance because we're adding the parcel updates cost, but otherwise meets guidance. The treasure collector budget meets guidance, it actually exceeds guidance. Because the the budget actually shows for FY twenty five, the merger of the two, the treasure collector's office being combined into one. With the anticipation that the special legislation will be approved at the the state house in a timely manner. To be able to 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 fully merge those positions, but. In merging those two positions, we've been able to eliminate a benefit funded position. Save forty thousand dollars in salary. And also save about fourteen thousand dollars in benefit costs. With that merger. Finance and accounting meets guidance, except with the additional OPEB audit that we need to do every year, every other year. Conservation commission meets guidance, however, it does fund the conservation agent at a at a market salary. IT doesn't meet guidance because of the additional cost for cybersecurity software. Town buildings. And Sean can get into more of that detail, should you desire. Includes additional funding for the maintenance of the town hall HVAC and alarm system. It's an aging system. There's been a lot of heating and cooling units in town hall that have not been functioning well or had need to be repaired and and Sean's got a plan to. To keep those in a in a in a state of good repair. There's additional funds in the budget to cover the the water that we're supplying for drinking because of the PFAS in the the water supply well. And there's an additional. Twenty thousand dollars in that could be attributed to library maintenance because of that that new building. The larger square footage, the the elevator maintenance and that sort of thing. As recommended by the architect and OPM. To to keep current with with vendor contracts and and inspections. Sustainability meets guidance, the police meets guidance and also funds their collective bargain agreement. And Chief Galvin can give a little more detail on that and some of the savings he's seen in recent years with the grants. That he has and. You know, in future years, if we're not successful in getting those grants, there might be some more pressure on the operating budget. Fire and rescue and cleat includes additional costs for medical exams for firefighters. The ambulance budget. Has that revenue correction that I mentioned. Building inspectors, public works, so no one ice, all meet guidance. Public Works does have some assumptions built in for the collective bargaining agreement. That's that's under negotiation. Solid waste budget and the transfer station budget includes some. A in anticipated costs for for new contracts that. Anticipated costs for for new contracts that will be need to enter into an F Y twenty five. And we heard yesterday that Mass D E P is gonna be requiring that our landfill now the groundwater wells around our landfill be tested for PFAS. Um that cost from our consultant, um we've got a cost proposal. That's an additional fifteen thousand dollars a year in testing. That we need to budget for. The recycling committee budget meets guidance. Council on Aging meets guidance with the exception of the sit and sip program. Um and and a couple other minor things based on their their. Your um programs. The veterans um meets guidance. Historic Commission meets guidance, however, they're requesting and the fifth signage for the historic district. They installed four. Over the past year, they'd like to do a fifth. There was a there's a fifth location that's important to them. That they've included in their budget, so. Quick summary overall, um not intended to replace any detailed review that the board should wish to do. Just wanted to help. This maybe guide your. Um your your future review of the various budgets. And also wanted to offer up to the the two chiefs and and Sean to to give context to their budgets, but. Before they do that, just wanna pause and see if there's any questions of the select board on on what I've been talking about.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, Paul's arm is sore because it's been up for twenty minutes, so uh. Go go ahead, Paul.
Well, first, let me say is that speaking as one select board member. It would take quite a convincing case for me to ever vote. For an operating override. And so. To all budget makers and 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 to you, Jeremy. I'm. Not willing to support. An operating override next year or the year after or whatever. And so. I don't know where my other colleagues stand, but I suspect that would be pretty much the same. It would be a heavy burden of proof to. Justify. Getting to an override, so that needs to be factored in. To all of these budgets. And so I'm assuming that the numbers that you're presenting. With all its use of the excess levy capacity. Is really pre-screening and pre-vetting and and pre. Um cross-examination of all the budget makers. So at the end of the day. These numbers should. Be adjusted. Based on. The work of advisory, the worker, the select board and worker, the town administrator. To sharpen these numbers. And I'm I'm urging that those numbers be sharpened downward and not upward. Given that chart that you have up there now called excess. Levy capacity. I also assume that when you're. Looking at the numbers for next year. We know the state has been hard hit. In the current year. And so the. The projected state receipts. Are factored in for. A twenty-three thousand increase with I I can't see that.
Yeah, it was modeled in as a two percent increase, but you're right, Paul, and and. In recent days, you know, after this budget was was. Put together and published, you know, the nine C cuts put forward by the governor. Do you put doubt into the the revenue, state revenues that will be available in F Y twenty five? So. It may be more um. It may be more beneficial to assume that local or or state aid. At at. Will will not be increasing. At all for F Y twenty five. Um it it may be level funded. May even go down in the end.
But I I I think it'll go higher than two percent uh based on the information I have. Uh. State aid to municipalities is a highly favored number and this. Three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns who include. Representation from every uh house member and. Every senator represents a city or town. And therefore, uh. No one wants to hit. Local governments. A because. We provide the public safety, we provide the roads, we do all these things. This. An agreement in place to fund. State aid, the increases in state aid. Based on the increases to the overall state budget. So if the state budget increases by just two percent. Then that's what we will get. But if it. They they have this new tax revenue source, this millionaire's tax. That presumably is gonna produce more revenues and so on. So there there are things in the pipeline to. To increase state. State revenues. Along with the with the nine C cuts. But anyway, my my my. My overall point is that this this is pre-vetting. And I'm just urging you to start with a goal of no override this year, next year. Or into the foreseeable future and therefore. Work backwards from there. To see. What can be done with these numbers? I'm taking this as being this is what everybody wants. Or have you, Jeremy, gone through and and reduced the numbers being asked? Already?
In the budgets to directly roll up to the select board's office and the town administrator, we have done some some pre-vetting, yes. Um obviously, there are other budgets, much bigger budgets that don't roll up through the select board that. We have no control over that that have been just presented as submitted. Um.
Okay, um. Are you all set, Paul? I think we'll go on to Stephen's next.
Um yeah, actually, this is good timing because this is the slide that I wanted you you to be on, Jeremy. And first off, Jeremy, really amazing job on this whole presentation. I know the amount of work that had to go into this and um I greatly appreciate it. Um. It's a lot better than anything I put out when I was the advisory chair. Um I I think that this. This slide is very important because it gives you the sort of like big picture overview of the expenses. I think that. A lot of times people um talk in generalities about expenses and just kind of like. Uh a lot of hand wavy like, oh, we have to keep our expenses down. And then when you get down to brass tacks, one of the things that um. We realized uh on advisory is that we actually have very few levers that we can pull to um affect real change in the expenses. And this. This summary actually um lays that out pretty well, right? We have these three categories, education, town government and undistributed expenses. Undistributed expenses, we basically have no control over these. Um to a degree, we have control over debt service, but it's like. There's multiple layers of oversight that all capital expenses go through, and I I'm pretty pretty confident that we aren't uh. You know, uh making a lot of major frivolous purchases on the capital side. Um. Education, we as the select board, um we have practically no control over that as well. Um even as a town, uh we have. Theoretically, we have control over the elementary schools budget, but um you know, there's. It 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 the the region, the the region really is kind of uh dictating how the schools are run. And so. Um it's it's. The advisory committee does what it can to um. Uh lower those numbers, but um you know. We as the select board have very little control over that. So really. Town government, that's the category with that we as a select board have some amount of control over. And if you look at that percentage change, three point seven three. Um that's very close to advisory's guidance. I know that um. Polo was three point five percent. I did notice in a lot of the detailed budgets, you know. The the uh refrain on a lot of the salary lines was three point nine percent. I assume that is sort of because of the vagaries of the number of actual workdays in twenty twenty-four. Uh so. My assumption is that a three point five percent cola, the actual effective guidance number for salary is actually three point nine percent for for fi- fiscal twenty-five. Is that? Is that accurate?
Yeah, to do with the number of days in the year.
Right, right. So my point being that, you know, if if cola is essentially three point nine percent on salaries, then having a total uh. Budget increase of three point seven three percent, I I think that salaries generally speaking uh are a larger proportion of the budget than expenses. So. Uh that's very close to guidance. Um and so. The budgets that we are talking about today um and have any ability to affect some kind of a change over. Uh we are essentially would be asking collectively the town government. On departments to go below guidance, you know, which is like, that's a great goal, but it's like, there's a reason why guidance is what it is, and we would have to. Uh we would have to have uh some some direction as to which services to cut in order to get. Uh below guidance when we're quite close. So I I I think. All I'm saying is that it's put it puts it into perspective as to how difficult it is. To balance the budget and have a plan going forward. I mean, it's a very alarming. Um decrease in the um excess levy capacity. And I'm just. You know. Uh how how to get that curve going back up again isn't as easy as simply saying, oh, we gotta do something about this, you know, it's well, what what are you gonna do? There's there's not, there's not a lot of places, there's not a lot of wiggle room is 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 kind of my point.
All right. Thank you, and I concur with your, this was excellent, Jeremy. Um Eric, you're next.
Yeah, just just a note that Jeremy said. I just want to encourage him to kind of move forward on that and uh I'll be interested to see what we can what we can come up with. He said, uh. There's this coming up retirement and it's two open positions that I'd love to see some um ability to kind of think outside the box, look at those positions in a more efficient manner. And see, you know, a lot of times, especially Sherburne, you know, people are, you know, in jobs for twenty or thirty years or whatever it is. You kind of settle in a way of doing things, and Jeremy comes with some good outside perspective, and I'd love to see any ideas he has on like. Efficiencies, not just even monetary efficiencies, but operational efficiencies, things that make sense essentially like, you know, um is a certain position. Do we need that to be the do the same things it's always been doing or have more or different skill sets? So. I just, I would like to encourage and hope the board encourages Jeremy to look into that during this next fiscal um during this budget budget timeframe.
Yeah, good example of that, and we've already, the costs are reduced already because we went with the regionalized dispatch system. This reflects the benefits of us having done the regional dispatch, so. That's the biggest way to change things if we can find solutions that share with other towns, which I know we're working on in several different departments right now to regionalize some of the costs.
Uh Marion. Uh yeah, just I have to reiterate that this is the best summary. I finally begin to understand town budgets a little bit. Thank you, Jeremy. Uh I I have uh just a uh kind of a a technical question about the report, and I know this report. Must be accurate because I totally trust it. But um on that very first, on this chart in front of us. Uh the. Total school budget, and I do want to talk a little bit about school budgets, even though it's out of our control. It's not completely out of our control, and I think we should come back to it. But anyway. Um the uh just in the aggregate, the school budgets come up to about a total of some on something on the order of twenty million.
For all. It's about sixty percent or sixty-three percent of the total budget.
That's right, sixty-three percent of the total budget, actually fifty, almost sixty percent according to the pie chart. Okay, twenty million, and then I see eight points. Something eight point three million for town government. That doesn't jive with what I see in the town in the pie chart. Why is that, Jeremy? General town government in the pie chart is eleven percent. Schools are. Fifty, over fifty percent.
Yeah, on this slide here, Marion, town government also includes public works and public safety.
Oh, and on the pie chart, it's combined.
Just general government and public works and public safety are 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 split out independently.
Uh yeah, I didn't notice that. Sorry, that's obvious.
I I probably could use a different title here to make that clear, but on this slide, town government includes general town offices, police, fire. Public works.
Got it. Okay, great. Um but back to the school issue. You know, seeing as the school budget is such a huge part of our. Budget. Uh and eight and six percent increases. Have a way outside effect on. On our uh our situation. And even though we don't have a lot of control, I mean, we have some control surely. And I'd just like to hear uh from others who've been in this arena a little longer with the school committees. Both the Sherburne School Committee and the Regional. Uh where there are opportunities for input because the general. Uh sequence seems to be, as long as I've looked here, which is a long time now, is that. Uh the schools ask and the town gives. Uh because we our schools are such a high priority. But uh tell me, those of you who are more familiar with the school and the school budgets, where are opportunities for input might be?
I mean, honestly, it's a it's mostly the advisory committee. Um the the advisory committee puts pressure on both the school committees, the schools, Sherburne School Committee and the regional school committee. Um you know, and honestly, in my experience, kind of like seeing um. How the budgets are developed and how they are discussed and passed. Uh you know. Don Fator, who is the business manager for the region, I mean, she. Uh there is a very strong argument that the most powerful person in the town of Sherburne is Don Fator. Very strong argument for that. So she comes up with the budget and she gets very little uh pushback from the um school committees, you know, it is. Technically, the school committee's budget that is presented to the town, but. It's Dawn that's presenting it, you know, and when she proposes her budget uh for vote at the committees, uh they basically vote what Dawn recommends. Um so then it ends up basically being up to the um. Uh advisory committee and Dover warrant to push back on the budget. I have literally in my six years on advisory, never heard Dover warrant say a single thing in opposition to Dawn's proposed budget. So. Then it comes down to essentially the Sherburne Advisory Committee pushes back. Um. And it's a it's a big and a complicated and uh confusing budget. Um I never understood it. Um you know, we had three uh advisory members that were liaisons, and so they understood the budget pretty well, and they were very good. Um. And uh you know, I I I will say that Dawn, generally speaking, is pretty receptive and um she. Um u- usually is able to bring her budget. I mean, it's it's not a surprise that at the beginning of the budget cycle, her budget is as high as as it is. Uh for the entire year, and it comes down uh a a bit uh before the public hearing. Um I and we never really know how much we can get it to come down. Um some years it has come down quite a bit, some years it did not really move very much at all. Um so. Uh realistically, you know, yes, we can put some pressure, but again, like you say, the schools are very important. It is for probably a majority of the people who live in town, the reason why they came here is for the schools. Um and it is, I think, um similar for Dover, so. It is uh difficult um to ask the town. To say, we need to put pressure on the schools to reduce their budget because their whole reason for being here is the schools. Um.
All right, but but one could put pressure to uh reduce the increases in budget. I mean, obviously, neither we nor advisory can micromanage schools. Uh but uh I think we need to look for some. Sort of leverage there because.
Let me make a few points here, Mary. And if the the first is I uh Mary Wolf and I, believe it or not, about. Six years ago, took a million dollars out of the school budget in one year, but we had to go, it was like. Small things everywhere, so you can push back. Dawn is excellent. I agree with that. Couple things, I think this is, you can correct me, Stephen. I believe this is the first year of the new teacher's contract kicking in. So I believe part of the increase is we just, you know, George Moore was on our negotiating representative to the union. So this is year one of the new teacher's contract. So I believe that that sometimes includes a step function as opposed to a cola type increase. Um not just in the base salary, but in other teacher allowances. So I think part of the increase we're seeing here is. Uh due to the new union contract that they just signed. Whenever that was, six months ago or that timeframe. Second thing is, one unique thing about the schools is um special ed. There can be huge changes in special ed that you can't plan for. If a child moves to town that has to have a. Out-of-district educational experience, that can be four hundred thousand dollars per student. Um and so that's not like a percentage increase in the budget, and they can't, the school can't control it if it so happens that that student um. Uh special needs dictate that kind of a special. uh, special needs dictate that kind of a special learning environment outside of the school system, that can be unexpected. Now, we did create a few years ago, a reserve fund in Sherburne for the, just for Pine Hill Sped Department. I think there was, what was it, Steve? I think it used to be like about $150,000 or something like that.
Yeah, we actually, we dipped into it last year. And I was gonna say that actually, I think that's a large chunk of the increase in the, um, elementary school budget is special education. It was, you know, last year we had to go, it was an unexpected increase. Uh, and then we had to, we had to go into the education stabilization fund.
Yep.
To pay for it, but then this year it has to be rolled into the budget. So that's a lot of the reason why the.
Rolled into the budget, and then maybe they, uh, may, they might have budgeted to add back a little bit to the stabilization fund too, just so it's not permanently depleted. So we need to look at some of the components, but there are components, what I'm saying to the school budget that are nonlinear, that aren't a typical, how much does it increase versus last year? Sped is one, and, uh, we negotiate the contracts every three years, and this is a brand new school contract first year.
Yeah, that could be, uh, but, uh.
But we need to understand the components. That's why I introduced with, uh, describing what Mary Wolf and I did. But we, what happened, what we were able to get a million out of the budget was basically because they were over budgeting, but in tiny little things. What we, one thing we encourage them to do is not have a contingency in every budget line item, but just have one contingency category at the bottom, rather than tiny bits and all these little pieces that no one really sees. Uh, and they weren't, they weren't overspending, but they turned a lot of money back at the end of the year. We wanted to not overtax. So we wanted to take it out of the budget rather than get, uh, it turned back, but.
Can I add a thought here on this?
Uh, okay, quickly, Paul, but I'd like to get Dan's thoughts, because he's pretty knowledgeable too.
So one, just on the question, Marion's question about places to look in the school budget, there is a thing called the excess and deficiency fund.
Yes.
Which is sort of the extra money that the school has that they didn't spend. It's, it's kind of like free cash. And part of the debate is how much does the school committee use for their budget, for the upcoming budget?
Yeah.
And often they like to start off by, by holding back a, a lot of that money. But sometimes over the years, when I was in advisory, we were able to get them to lower that number.
Yes.
From what they were intending to keep and applying more to the operating budget, and therefore lessen the assessment on the communities.
Yeah, that can be done, and the range is, I think, three to 5%. You can't have more than 5% or you have to, um, distribute it to the towns, I believe. So, um, Dan can correct everything we've misstated, so go, go ahead, Dan.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, so just on schools, really, I think the discussion covered the pieces pretty well. Um, I can just mention by way of background, uh, that, uh, actually I and the other two school liaisons are meeting with Don Fator tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, um, to have much of the kind of conversation that we've just been, uh, just been talking about. But just to pick up on a couple of highlights, uh, the COLA, indeed a new contract, the COLA in the contract is 3%. But after you add in steps, um, longevity, total compensation budget, uh, total, total increase in average salaries about four and a half percent, and because they want to add a few new bits of positions, total compensation going up almost 4.8%. Sped, as mentioned, is also very important. Note that the out-of-district sped, um, even for students in the middle school or high school lands in the elementary school Pine Hill budget, because those students get allocated to Sherburne. So it lands in the budget. That's an important reason why the elementary school budget's up 8% rather than 6% because in addition to the big increase in sped last year, another big increase in sped this year with increases in tuition, um, and some shifts in placements and so on. Um, so, you know, all those factors are pushing things up. In terms of the conversation with Dawn tomorrow, um, E and D, front and center, just as Paul described, they often try to make, uh, things go so that they end up at just under 5% E and D, which then gives the school committees quite a bit of flexibility because they have authority over how to spend those funds. And then the towns, uh, town meeting no longer have any control over those funds. So we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that. And I'm obviously gonna start with Dawn just by highlighting exactly what Jeremy went through, uh, with the excess levy capacity decline. And that with, if there were to be another set of very large increases in school budgets next year, um, that might push the town into a situation of either an override or needing to do something really drastic, either with school budgets or other budgets. Um, and as, as Steve, Steve highlighted, uh, there's the, the levers for those other budgets for town government are just not that, not that powerful in terms of. So we'll see where that goes with Dawn tomorrow. As Steve said, um, those are hard conversations because for the region, it's all the issues of complicated governance. And we're gonna do our best, it can be hard to make, uh, huge amounts of progress there.
Well, I'm really sorry, knowing that Dan's in that position. Thank you, Dan.
Um, and I would just want to slip in, advisory meeting last night was a little bit, a little bit wild. Lots of concern about this picture with the decline in excess capacity. Um, uh, and I would just want to second what others said, that Jeremy's rolling up the budget was just fabulous. I think it really helped, um, advisory. We did have a bit of a wild, uh, set of people expressing concerns about this and where to go. Uh, I think I need to do a better job with advisor of helping frame the kind of choice set, um, along the lines of, so given that this is essentially a current services budget, uh, if we want to avoid the pressure of either an override or more dramatic cuts in a future year, then decisions, hard decisions would need to be made about what is it that the town's doing now? Either with the schools or with town government that the town wants to stop doing. And those, I think, will be hard conversations, hard decisions. I think advisory is really gonna struggle this year. And my, uh, forecast would be, you know, that's gonna be challenging for all of you on select board as well.
Can I make one suggestion?
Go ahead, Paul.
So Marion, Marion started the conversation with asking for points of discussion. And on the list of things that have been described as, as really beyond our reach is health insurance. And there is a state law that allows us to begin a process to change the contribution rate that applies to our health insurance. So I don't recall where our contribution rate right now is for in, in this town. I got too many tiles to keep track of. But there is a statutory formula by which you can initiate ways of better allocating, your plan design in a way that, that that better controls your costs. Let me, let me leave it at that. This, there's many ways you can adjust a health insurance plan with deductibles, with the contribution rate, with, uh, a variety of tools that are laid out in the statute that you could pursue if you wanted to pursue.
Yeah, all of which makes the, all of which make insurance a little less, uh, less valuable for the insurer. But yeah, that has to be done sometimes.
Has to be considered, yes. All right, uh, so I think your hand, you can put your hand down, Paul. I don't see any other raised hands. Um, so I think that was an excellent summary. I don't know, Jeremy, what do you recommend? Do we need to have the, um, Chief Galvin and Ward and DPW Director Colleen speak on it right now? Or we, we've got their budgets in detail. I'm not sure if we should go through them in detail tonight or not. What do you recommend?
Uh, well, I guess it's, it's at the, the board's discretion, and they are here. They could get, at least give some summary high points, maybe, um, not necessarily go through in, in line item detail. But, um, they did, uh, bear with us, um, through the meeting. Um, and I did ask them to come, they might be able to hot, offer some, some insights just in general on their budgets. And then, you know, I'd like to hear what the select board would like to do, um, with, with your view of the budgets, um, you know, would you like to, would you like to go through them in detail or, or not? Um, and, and how you would like to do that?
All right, let's do that after. Let's let each of them go through, uh, you know, at a very high level, their bottom line budgets, and then, uh, we can discuss what the select board wants to proceed. So, um, Tom, do you want to go first?
Sure, I can do that, and I think I can be pretty brief. I, I think I was very fortunate this year with, uh, with my budget. Um, as you look at our, our salaries, um, you know, we, with our, our COLA increases in the, the police union contract, you know, we only saw just over a 2% increase in our, in our salary side of the budget, um, which is obviously our most expensive side of the budget. Um, but then we actually saw a reduction in our expenses. And I've been in front of you quite a few times recently with grants. And, uh, I think this was one point that, that Eric made, uh, during one of those presentations, is it's what these grants that we've been able to apply for and been successful in obtaining, uh, have actually offset, um, expenses or things that the town's already been doing. They weren't for new programs. And, uh, so we were able to offset several of our, uh, expense items, uh, to actually have a, just over a 4% reduction in our, um, expense line, um, to, and only have an overall increase of just, uh, just over 1.6% for the entire operating budget for, uh, for this, uh, for next year. Um, you know, again, as, as Jeremy said, we can, and I'll bet that. But, uh, I think we've been very fortunate this year and, uh, and how we're moving forward.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna commend you on your budget. I mean, in the, the years, uh, prior to you coming on, the police budget, um, was, um, it was a thorn in our side. And, uh, a lot of it was the overtime. So one of my questions for you is, um, obviously the overtime number has come down quite a bit from the past couple of years. How are you actually, um, tracking in terms of budget versus actual in, on, in terms of your overtime for this fiscal?
So we, we will probably be a little bit over our actual this year. Um, when I met with Dev and Jeremy, uh, we talked about that. Um, we're actually shorthanded, uh, well, three positions, but we have one in the police academy. So really shorthanded two positions now, um, but one really functionally isn't on the street. So we've gone up in overtime a little bit as a result of that. Um, as of now, we have one, uh, officer in the academy, and we've made conditional offers to two others. And so that would fill those vacancies, which will then, uh, take care of the problem. But, um, you will see that we'll be over, I, I'd be, you know, hard pressed to guess exactly right now, but it's not gonna be drastic like you've seen in years. Um, you know, it'd be $20,000 increase over what it is, and it wouldn't be something I'd be coming back to the town for because we've saved the money on those salary items right now. So it would kind of offset there.
That's excellent. And then in terms of staffing overall, um, how is the turnover generally in your staffing as compared to previous years? That was also one of the things that was always concerning was the, the amount of turnover, especially people that we paid to put through the academy, and then, you know, a year or two later they leave. And then it's like, we put all that money and, and time into training them, and then, and then we didn't retain them, you know?
Right, it's, it's, that's still a concern. Um, unfortunately, um, this past year, we've had one resignation, someone who's no, no longer in policing. Um, it was a longer term employee. We have, uh, one officer that left to go to the state police, and that's, that's a great concern right now. The state police is very shorthanded, and they are doing, uh, a lot of recruiting and, uh, taking a lot of officers from municipal departments. Um, and then we had one officer leave and go to NADAC. The one benefit of the recruiting we're doing, however, is, um, the officer that's in the police academy now and the current two that, wow, we've made officers to, they're actually in a police academy already, um, that their funding is part of their college. It's a, I, I think I've told you about the Fitchburg State Program in the past. There's also a program at Merrimack College, uh, which is just a, a one-year program, master's degree in police academy. Um, all three of these, uh, young men are, are part of that. So they're actually funding their academy on their own. And even, uh, much of the equipment expense that would go, normally go into an academy is, uh, is covered by that. So we're, we're seeing a great savings in that, um, that really the only thing we have to purchase for them is their uniforms when they get out of the academy and their bulletproof vest. So it's a huge reduction in the cost of that, those, some of those training expenses. Uh, my hope is that once we've gotten this, we've gotten to this point, uh, with these new hires, um, that there's, won't be anybody else looking to leave, and, uh, and we'll be able to survive the next several years without, uh, without that exodus. It's, uh, you know, it's, it's a different world in policing, and, uh, we'll continue to fight that battle as it's presented to us.
I, I think also not having them function as dispatchers is a huge benefit to turnover reduction also. That's.
Absolutely.
That's a huge move, in, in addition to the operating costs in, in, uh, dispatch costs. Um, any other questions for the police chief? All right, uh, do you want to go next, Zach?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so we do have a number of increases in both the fire and, uh, the ambulance budget. But I will tell you, every single one of our increases is to, uh, to cover costs that we're virtually already incurring. Um, the firefighter wages and the EMT wages are going up, and those are based on, uh, both FY23 spend and the current fiscal year's spend. Um, as you know, there are a number of factors that go into determining that. The number of calls we do, uh, particularly some of the bigger calls of training that we cover, the storm coverage that we have to do and a number of other things. Um, the expenses on the fire side are up. Um, vehicle maintenance is up, uh, the cost of repairing the trucks continues to rise. We have some trucks coming off of warranty for certain things. Um, it's still lower than the, the three-year average. Um, and then as the, the town administrator said, the cost for our firefighter, uh, medical exams, uh, recently doubled, or the vendor that we used folded. Um, and we had to switch to a different vendor and it virtually doubled the cost. Um, so to cover those, uh, required physicals, uh, there was a significant increase in the NFPA, uh, certification line on the fire budget. Um, then the only other real big, um, ticket item as the, as the TA mentioned is the revenue correction on the ambulance service. So, uh, the ambulance, uh, receives revenue for, uh, providing service. The revenue is determined by a number of factors. Uh, the first one is the number of calls that we do. The second is the number of people that we transport to the hospital. And then the third one, which is usually the biggest ticket item, is the type of insurance that the people that we transport have. So for instance, we, we're doing a number of about 40% Medicare and Medicaid calls. And, uh, we bill at a, at a predetermined, uh, regulated rate. Um, and that's been, been affecting the ambulance revenue was as, as well as some of the practices of the insurance companies over the last couple of years. Um, so there's a, there's a revenue cor- uh, correction there to, um, better forecast the actual revenue that the ambulance has been receiving over the last year, few years. So then that's really the high level summary of our budget. I'm happy to go into whatever else you wish. So.
Um, Zach, I feel like, uh, I probably ask this every year, and it was probably ever since, uh, since Aaron Kenny was the chief. But I, I, I think that every year you're probably always looking at the EMT level and whether it makes sense to go up to paramedic level or whatever it is.
Yeah.
How's that, how's that looking right now?
So it's funny you mention that. So we, we're finishing an internal strategic plan right now. And in one of the sections, the administration of the department, that's recommendation number one, is to reevaluate it every year. Um, so, uh, based on the, the forecast and staffing for EMS services everywhere, based on the staffing challenges that we continue to have from time to time, staffing at the BLS level, um, we, we're, we're not recommending to pursue that, uh, quite, quite yet. Um, it's by far the number one question that I get asked by the residents of this town. Why are there two ambulances in my driveway, uh, when I only need one? You know, there are a number of reasons for that. Um, you know, um, why do, why are we pulling over on the side of the road on the way to Newton Wellsley to get another ambulance or to Framingham or to Boston? Um, so it comes up a lot, but based on our call volumes, the staffing and the, the EMT and paramedic levels in the state, I just don't think it's feasible at, at this time. I'd love to do it though, I'd, you know, that, that was one of my goals when I started. And, but unfortunately, I think the pandemic had a lot to do with, uh, putting that goal down, so, yeah. But thank you for asking again, though.
I'm gonna ask you.
So.
All right, I don't see other hands there. So Mr. Colleen, do you want to give us your summary?
So it didn't snow in December, so I didn't have a whole lot to do. I decided what I would do is jump on my budget up, rename everything, change all the account numbers and confuse the daylights out of everybody. Um, in all seriousness, not a whole lot changed. Um, but we had been talking about trying to clean up that budget. Anyone that has kind of walked in from the outside, including Jeremy last year, was kind of trying to figure out why I had about seven different budgets under one header. Was kind of trying to figure out why I had about seven different budgets under one header. Uh, so the lion's share of the work was actually doing that. And I caution anyone. To make sure you look at, at, uh, kind of the grouped line items, because there's some that go up significantly, but they're right next to one that went down a hundred percent. Um, a lot, most of the increases are, are really just a shift or a combination of, of several lines. Um, there is, you know, there's a few increases. Guardrail maintenance is one of them. Um. That, that's not going away. It's obvious if you drive through town, there's guardrails that are kind of just falling off the posts. So. Some of that's capital, some of it we just need to keep the upkeep of them. Um. Vehicle maintenance, I didn't, it didn't go up, um, but that might be our big bust this year. We're having a lot of problems with the trucks. We don't own anything that's under warranty except the pickup I drive. Uh, actually I take that back. It's not under warranty. So nothing we have is under warranty. So. It's an aging fleet. It's taken a lot to keep it going and showing up for snowstorms. Uh, there's two trucks in the shop right now. Not in our shop. There are two trucks out of town in shops. So. Uh, that comes at a high cost. The personal expenses, again, it's the same thing. They're kind of just jumbled around. Um. There's no real increases. I, I, I'm accounting for a full staff, which I don't have yet, but the intent is during. This upcoming year, we're gonna fill the staff back to full, which it hasn't been since prior to COVID. About all I have with the DPW.
So can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Paul.
So the last couple of storms. The last couple of storms have, have brought down a, a number of trees and it made me realize that. We need to do a fair amount of tree removal. Do you have enough funds? To address the trees that may continue to fall of future storms?
We typically, we have not been budgeting the, the major tree removals out of this budget. We use, we went through, uh, all the ARPA money that we had from, from. About eat, what, a year and a half ago when we divvied up the ARPA. Uh, we've gone through this year's budget. So we're actually going to be looking for different funds this, this current year. Uh. And then we'll need more next year. It's not, nobody's had the appetite to add significant increases into the operating budget. For the tree removals. We've gone from stabilization fund. Help me, Jeff.
We did, we did a hundred and fifty grand from the stabilization fund. It probably was five years ago, I want to say now.
Right. Now we did a couple of capital asks at, uh, town meetings, then we did the ARPA. Uh, I'm trying to be creative where we get it. It, it's hard to go to town meeting and ask for, for capital money to. Remove things from town, but.
Is there any number in Jeremy's workup here for tree removal?
Not extra money, no. I mean, it does.
I mean, there's fif- there's fifty thousand, but that's the same as last year.
Yeah.
Right.
And how much do you need, do you think?
That, that's a hard thing to answer. Um. A hundred thousand goes, goes really quick, but it, it, it's hard to say how fast they need to come down. Um, it's a little bit of a game with ever source because they spend four times the money we do. So we took, we try to time it with that. A hurricane would bring them all down, get them on the ground, and then the governor would help us pay for it. So it's, it's hard to say what'll happen. The, the storms seem expensive in overtime, but cheaper to pick up a tree that's laying on the ground than. Then, uh, take it down when it's up in the air hanging over the wires.
Didn't we ask for an earmark? Aren't the earmarks coming up soon? Would it be worth, um, required, trying that request again?
We can definitely submit it, but they're just reduced. We just got our earmark for the three hundred fiftieth just got cut in half. Already.
But that's for everybody. Everybody's earmarks across the state.
I know, I, I know.
All the earmarks by fifty percent.
I know.
They're not singling out our three hundred fifty.
No, no, I didn't say they're singling it out, but, uh, if they're reducing them by fifty percent, proposing a new earmark is probably. Not necessarily a high percentage.
At some point, um, you, you folks may want to, you know, relook at the ARPA spending. And maybe there's some, some funds there that could shuffle around to help fund some additional tree work.
That's a good suggestion. And as to Sean's point, we did do some money from the general stabilization fund and we tried not to do it again. And within that next budget year, we actually replenished the money that we took out into the stabilization fund too, but. And remember tree work, when he says tree work, you know, it's between three and five thousand dollars for one major tree. And that includes, um, a third of the cost is police detail work. If it's not, unless it's in a cola sack somewhere, there's a lot of. Police detail work involved in working on Greenwood Street or someplace like that. So it's not just paying Stanley Trees or, uh, uh, whichever tree company you're using. There's a lot of other costs associated with tree work. All right, uh, Marion?
Uh, yeah, uh, while we're on the subject of trees, um, I, the last couple of years, few years, I've gotten. Questions after town meeting, why don't, why don't you budget more for trees? You know, we would have approved more money for trees. We want to give more money for trees. And, uh. I, I know that, you know, maybe doubling to three hundred thousand wouldn't, still wouldn't be enough. There's so many trees that need to come down. But there's a huge cost to electricity being knocked out in a large part of town too. And I wonder if anybody's ever calculated, you know, what the, what the follow-on costs are. When the town is out of power.
Well, that's a misunderstanding a little bit though, Marion. So any trees that are considered, uh. Power line threatened in, ever source pays for.
Right. Yes, I know that, but, um, trees fall that are not falling on the power lines and.
Yes.
Uh, so, but, but they do fall on the power lines when they weren't supposed to fall on the power lines. Uh, but my, my, my follow-on question is, I don't seem to see ever source out there much this fall or winter. I, you know, I've seen much less tree, uh, dangerous tree and limb removal. Around town that I've seen previously. Is that just my, uh, my poor sample or? What's your impression, Sean?
So, um. Perception is, is somewhat, uh, a timing thing. There's five circuits in town. So depending on where you live, you, you're only going to see the pruning, pruning crews in your area every fifth year. Uh. So that's, that's part of it because those crews, you really see them. They're slow moving. They're cutting stuff off of almost every tree on the road. Um, so your, y- your side of town was, I think, two years ago. Um, and it, you know. It, 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 you're scheduling workers, so sometimes the storms and everything else will push it out. Um, they come, they, they come to us every year with the maps, with the circuits they need to hit. Um, it, you know, and, and basically an approval. And by not denying it, they get the approval by state law, uh, to come in and do what they need to do to clear the lines.
Yeah.
So they're, they're still, they're still making the same effort and they have.
Okay.
Uh, the takedown trees, uh, it's certainly slowed down. Uh, that was myself, the tree warden, really hammering on them for several years. Uh, when I first started, because, you know, that was right after the, the drought and the gypsy moth infestation and, and there was. A massive amount of trees that had to come down. There's parts of town that don't look like they used to look because of Greenwood Street.
Bullard, Bullard's, Bullard's, Bullard's Street is unrecognizable.
We're still not out of the woods on Bullard Street.
Yeah.
No fault of Paul's. Um, you know, I, before, I see Dan's got his hand up and I just have to throw out that. Uh, tonight, at least two members of the Board of Selectmen, maybe three, just suggested that I increase my budget and I just, I needed. Needed a comment on that.
Uh, well, Dan, y- you get your rebuttal now.
I, yeah, I, I, I actually was gonna make a different comment, but just to, to, to come back to Sean. Um, yeah, I think it's, it's a great example of, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, things that people in town want done. And those things cost money and the idea of we're somehow magically going to get the budget down. To some, you know, very, very, I mean, of course it's going to come down because there's going to be vetting. We're going to go after the schools and so on. But to get it down to something that looks dramatically different than what's in Jeremy's roll-up, um, would require. Uh, going back to Sean and others and say, don't do this stuff that you're currently doing. Do less of it. Um, so I think, I think Sean's point about the trees is, is a good example of that. I wanted to just really briefly circle back to. Uh, a point Jeremy made a minute ago about ARPA funds. And that is to say, my understanding is that there is a use it or lose it with the deadline of December thirty-one this year. And that is contracts must have been signed by December thirty-one of this year. Um.
Twenty twenty-four, December twenty twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Contracts need to be signed. So. If there are ARPA funds with projects that have gone more slowly than anticipated and it appears that perhaps. Uh, contracts wouldn't be signed by December thirty-one. It might be interesting for the board to consider, as Jeremy said, whether some reallocation, um, might be. Might be useful to projects that could have a signed contract by, uh, December thirty-one.
I think there's a significant opportunity there because I think there's even some monies we haven't allocated yet also.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, is, is that like twenty, twenty-five grand or so that's unallocated?
No, I think it's more than that, but we, Deb's, let's not go into it tonight, but Deb has sent us probably every two weeks an ARPA update. Um, with the status of all the projects we've approved, including what they've spent today. For example, Laurel Field Irrigation System is going to be a big question. Um, because we found out that the wells are not very productive, uh, there. So that's a big issue, but there's also some, um. Unallocated funds, uh, you know. I, I, I would guess we've only allocated or spent two hundred fifty grand out of four hundred grand or some, whatever the amounts are, but we, there's significant money there.
Um, I guess I have a question for Sean, if, uh, if that's all right, Jeff.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, just again, overarching question and it's a refrain, you've heard this from me before, but the, uh, the, the annual question of sort of. Um, operating versus, um, capital. Um, you know, I know historically there have been, uh. You know, discussions about, uh, capital expenditure or, you know, capital budgeting for things that, uh. Really should have been in operating. I guess my question is, how are you feeling right now with the state of your budgets? And how your department or departments, I guess, run in terms of operating versus, um, capital? And are, are you happy with where, where your funding is coming from in terms of is stuff that's coming from your budget versus coming from capital?
Well, this one much more than, say, town buildings. Steve, I thi- I think we have the difference when we talk about town buildings. The fire is trees, uh, because like everyone else, I don't want to add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. In trees. I don't want to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year on trees and I have. Uh, we're hoping that'll go away. It's somewhat tragic that we're doing it. But, you know, most everything else is, is a pretty healthy mix. Um, again, we've gone up on maintenance of trucks. Since I started, but we haven't been buying, uh, we haven't really been replenishing the fleet. So. It's, it's been a decent investment, I think, uh, on, on holding back because every truck costs three hundred and something thousand dollars. Uh, for the bigger ones. So the, the maintenance has been somewhat well spent, but we can only hold that off so long. That cap, that capital will start hitting, but. But for the roads, it's, it's a decent mix. We have to, we have to fund some of it within the budget. The lion's share of road, road work is, is either capital or chapter ninety. Uh.
And of course we have the funding for the, we have the funding for the roundabout in there too, ob- obviously.
Right. And there's nothing in this budget that's going towards the roundabout, uh, except maybe some of the, uh. You know, the police details. I, I try to cover as much of the police details in the budget as we can. Um. A large, large, large project, a standalone project will usually have its own, uh, but we're self-funding. The, the contract and we're hoping because we're going to be shutting the road down, we won't have a huge, huge load of. Police details at, at the roundabout. There certainly will be some. Uh. But it actually, it helps that situation when we're closing the road completely.
Sean, do you want to talk anything about the tomorrow's, uh, mission? You want to fill the board in on what you're, what you're planning tomorrow?
While we talk about, um, work and unexpected work, um. We, my biggest fear almost came to fruition with Coolidge Street, um. The, yesterday's rain or two days ago rain actually surged most of the streams in town as bad as the, the six or. Eight-inch rainstorms of, a few weeks ago, uh, and. Coolidge Street just about went underwater. And the culvert began to fail, uh, on the upstream side and it, and it scoured out some earth under the, under the roadway. So tomorrow, we will be excavating some of the road. The inbound lane is now hollow. Anyone that's driven down there saw a row of cones up against the guardrail. So we have to open that up, put some flowable fill in it and, uh, basically Band-Aid it back together. The, the culvert, it won't be any better. Hopefully it's, it. The fix should be better than, than what we had, but the culvert is, is limited in size. Uh, Jeremy came out and saw it today. Um, we, we hit capacity yesterday on, on a handful of major, major, major. Uh, culverts and streams. Um, so we're lucky it didn't get any worse. It could have been a very significant cost. Uh, my crew will be doing the work tomorrow because it's really just a small patch. And, uh, paving it back over, but had it, had it got much worse, it would have been close the road and hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix probably.
Yeah, and it's, it's, we're getting, one of the culverts we're going to need to keep an eye on. It's, it's, it's an interesting culvert. It's, it was an old box culvert. It's got like railroad, uh, rails as the reinforcing for some of the concrete and it was widened at some point. When they widened it, they put the, these corrugated metal pipes abutting against the concrete box and they don't fit together. And where, where that joint is, um, that's where this water scoured up, kind of came up, bubbled. It was. Couldn't get through into the box culvert, so it came up and took some gravel away. So it's old and, uh, kind of pieced together. And Sean will help piece it together a little bit more tomorrow, but we'll need to keep it on our radar.
I'm sure you're aware there's another one to two inches of rain that's supposed to come tomorrow night, yeah?
That's, that's why we're going to be spending our Friday.
He's using a fast sitting grout, so it, it should set up pretty quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, next, um, budget season, we're probably going to have a flood budget added to the.
We might. We've spent more on, uh, rainstorms and snowstorms this year for sure.
Hmm. Can we categorize that as snow and ice?
Lot of water, yes. Huge, future ice.
Liquid ice.
Your ice. All right. I think we've covered this, so I appreciate it, uh, Tom and Zach and Sean and Jeremy.
Is Sean gonna do, um, town buildings?
Oh, did, do you want him to do that?
We can.
Any high points there, Sean?
What's that?
Do you want to elaborate a little bit on the town buildings?
Um, we can, we. The thing we did here is, um, and Jeremy touched on this in his presentation, um. We now have existing con- or in-place contracts for the electric and the gas supply. Everyone will remember the past few years, we were kind of just pacing the rates up as they were kind of skyrocketing up. Uh, gas first, then electric. We didn't have any contract. We were just going with the ever source rates. Um. So between that contract work with Jeremy and now with the library, both online and having some history, we, we were. Much better positioned to, to put real numbers towards what, what those rate, uh, bills would be. Some of them came down from my estimate. Um, I kind of had a version one point one that I brought to Jeremy and then Jeremy, we we sat together with Deb and. Queaked. Exactly where we wanted those to be, so we're, we're pretty confident those are good numbers. I had to add, the next biggest line in that budget I had to add. Which Jeremy already highlighted was the, um, building maintenance for the library. We, we pretty much own that now. Everything out of warranty except some final work they're finishing, so. We're on our own, uh, and it's, and it's a, it's a big building, so this. Fair amount upkeep. Fair amount inspections we have to do annually, the lot, the elevator, the sprinkler system. Um, and keep the systems all working.
So I guess to my previous question, then, uh, how do you feel about the balance of, uh, capital versus operating in your town buildings budget?
Well, I would say the same, if we're doing, I think we're doing better than we were. Uh, with operating. Versus trying to operate off the capital. It, we were doing much more of that before, but I brought the operating budget up a little bit. I, it, it, it still should probably go up. But I'm, I'm not going to propose that it go up. I can't identify exactly where the cost is going to be. The buildings are aging. And and each year they get, it's a little bit more of a Russian roulette of where we're going to spend the money. We've been spending a lot of money that we weren't spending before on elevators. Some of that has been mandated with some, uh, code changes. That are certainly hitting and costing a lot on, you know, these twenty year old elevators that the town hall and the fire station have. Other is just systems. You know, we, we, we did capital work at the police station to upgrade the heat. Now it's out of warranty again, so. You get your exponential. Increases and costs on on those units.
And how are you doing with, uh, I guess, keep keeping up with, uh, the like onsite insight recommendations? I think each year you'll probably go through that list and look at, look at certain things and decide. This one can go another year or this one we have to do or whatnot. And sometimes you, I I I think you're like, we don't have the money for that. So how how's it going with the onsite insight?
Well, we've, we've never really kept up with it. A, a couple of things have limited our ability and and still do. One is the ability to get contractors to come in and do the work. That's been difficult and or designers. You know, mo- more on the capital side. Trying to get designers to. Uh, maybe redesign a heating system. The, the other thing that. Is timely is trying to balance out what, where we can spend the money and or combine it with grants. Um, Jeremy's finally been on the hot seat with. Helping us with the green communities grants. That's a lot of money, but it's also, you know, a lot of work in the background. That things like the insulation at the town hall, we've been talking about for. Almost two years and, uh, I think we're finally going to pull that off. That's a big project. It took a fair amount of work. I see Michael Lesser's here too. Um, the three of us have been working on that for quite a while. So that, you know, there's capital money that's that's sitting there and and waiting for that. And then we'll finally pull that off and it's, and it's a, it's a good grant. So. That's kind of how those fit together and sometimes projects play off of each other. A heating system after the HVAC. Um, or some. Perhaps some plumbing work after something else. The bottleneck was during COVID, no one wanted to really do anything and you couldn't get HVAC guys to work on anything unless it was a massive, massive overhaul. Because everyone was working on the hospitals and office buildings and. And upgrades, so that. That's still kind of flushing its way out.
All right. I think we've covered it for tonight and, uh, so we didn't answer one question, um. Jeremy asked us, you know, what, how do we want to proceed with this? This is a superb summary. How do people feel about, uh? Next steps in this process of the budget review?
Personally, I'm, I'm hi- I'm happy with tonight having been our budget overview, um. I mean, I, uh, probably because I'm used to doing it from advisory, but I looked through. Each of the budgets that 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 Jeremy, um, or Diana, whoever it was, uh. One of you two, uh, sent around to everybody, so I looked at. All the budgets like I usually do with advisory and so, I mean, I think I. I have exhausted the questions that I have tonight, so I don't know, do you? Do we usually vote on each of these budgets at some point prior to the public hearing? Or?
It varies would be my answer, but I, I always have felt we should vote at a minimum. Before the hearing on the budgets that report to the select board, it seems almost. Not doing our jobs if we don't vote on those ones. The other ones, you know. We could decide whether to vote in advance or to vote at the public hearing, but. Seems like police, fire, DPW and town buildings, we should. Have approved before, not tonight, but before, uh, the public hearing.
Yeah.
Like the mall, just to get an idea before we vote, like I do, I mean, I, I know George and you and everyone has kind of different ideas throughout the years. I do agree with the fact. The I concept at least of seeing them all. Before you vote on anything, yeah, I, I still vote before the advisory, but.
Yeah.
They, okay, I'll take something, I do, do, you know, you can start to get an idea of the big picture as well versus just seeing one and voting on one.
Well, that's why Jeremy's summary was so good because I think the bigger picture is coming into view much earlier than it typically did, I guess I would say.
And we started to get some background from Chief Galvin. Ward. Colleen. Uh, we have, we are, we already have an orientation to these budgets that we'll want to vote before, I, I agree you should vote. At least those budgets before advisory.
So how about, how about this as a suggestion? Um, we did have a pretty strong discussion tonight though. And I think there's a little bit more work to go back on each of the budgets to look at the detail. My suggestion is two weeks from tonight. Why don't we discuss the preliminary capital budget because we haven't seen anything on that yet, so then we'll have an idea. Of where we stand on some of those capital items also. Does that make sense to people? To balance the, uh, operating budget out?
Good idea. Yes.
And then, and then in early February, uh, our next meeting is, uh. What is it, the twenty fifth, I believe, of January, then in early February, we could maybe circle back on the operating budget then. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you have two meetings in February before.
Yeah.
Advisory hearings, March sixteenth. So your two meetings in February, you could, you know, in each of those meetings, maybe divide up and hear a little bit more detail on the operating budgets those nights.
Yeah, we might have had some time collectively to push back between. Your work, Jeremy and Dan, uh, advisory work. With individual budget makers, we might have. Something slightly different to consider in February. So why don't we, is that everyone agreeable with that plan? Look at, look at capital so we at least have an idea, you know, it allows us to have. Sort of a, a fuller picture of the full. Scope of expenditures that we're looking at.
Yes.
All right, so we'll do that. Thank you, uh, very much, Jeremy and all the budget makers and Dan, thanks for, uh, staying on top of it and. Um, we appreciate all of it, advisory's input.
Before we hang up or whatever, we end this item, I was gonna ask Jeremy, do you mind sending me, I, I know I can't do anything about it, but I'd like to see the school budget. Never looked at it in detail, so. Educate myself.
Meaning both, you want to get, because Pine Hills is a separate document usually.
Yeah, there's two, there's two different budget documents that that we have hard copies of that we've scanned and. I'm, I'm able to send that over to you, Eric.
They don't send you electronic copies.
That's one of, that's one of their, uh, their little tricks.
Do a public work request, you can.
They used to give us books, now they gave us beautiful yellow books for years. I still have them.
It was easy enough to take the little pins out and scan it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I, I, there you go.
Yeah.
I love those books.
Yeah, we will all get a copy on advisory, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
I'm sorry, that boy, that is terrible if they don't send electronic copy, honest to goodness, truth. That, that, that there wraps up, I think explains a lot right then and there, okay.
They must have, they must have a PDF version if they've made a book.
Of course.
I'm sure they do, so, um. Mr. Durasis, can you make a, a motion with respect to consent agenda for us, please?
Move approval.
All right, do I have a second? The agenda is the payroll warrant and the one day liquor license.
Yes.
Is there a second? Do you second it, Stephen?
I second it.
All right, Eric.
Hi.
Stephen.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Marian.
Hi.
And I am I as well and we're on to select board reports, so I'm going to give you three or four quickly. The first I already told you, the three, I got the Becca Roush called me this week, we are, uh, three hundred fiftieth. Earmark of thirty five grand was cut to seventeen five. Um, but there, she, she had to tell the, uh, Norfolk Fire Chief, who I think is still Aaron Kenny, that. His radios are eliminated altogether. So she had a lot of calls to make. Next thing is we're meeting tomorrow with, uh, Bill Solomon on Comcast contract renewal, so we're, we're working on, uh. The terms of, uh, renewing that agreement. And then, uh, actually only one more item. Next Tuesday night, which is the sixteenth of, uh, January, the ZBA is having their next. Hearing on the Farm Road forty B project. So what, uh, with Diane's input, we posted a select board meeting for that night and Clayce, three of us show up. So if we have a quorum, we can just open the meeting, so it's, it's, um. A Zoom meeting, it starts at seven PM on January sixteenth, next Tuesday. And if three of us are there, then we'll just make a motion. I'm not a hundred percent sure if I can come, but if there's three of us, we'll make a motion to. Open a select board meeting concurrent with ZBA. Does that make sense? So it's on our, it's on our agenda for that reason.
Didn't we determine, I think, I feel like Eric, you made this point last time the ZBA thing came up, that. That technically we can all attend and we can even ask questions directly to the ZBA. We, we don't really need to post a meeting, right?
Yeah, it's belt and suspenders. I, I think this, it gets a little borderline trouble. Let's say you ask a question of the ZBA and then I chop off of that question, that's a part where. So it's a little, it is belt and suspenders and frankly, this might be a, I don't know, I don't use the word litigious, but you know, it's a very sensitive subject, so I think if we do everything. It's be safer than sorry.
Sure.
I would still poke and see what happens. But no, you don't have to, all right, like to have in case we've kind of accidentally, people have shown up to the same meeting and then it's kind of like, okay, you know, and then that's just not the end of the world or something.
We just anticipated that this one. Could be likely to get more people.
Right, I, I planned to go.
Yeah. All right, so that was my three items. Are there other select board reports?
Yeah, I've got one. Um, I got another email from the Charles River Watershed people. They were asking. Uh, about CPA, you know, again, they, uh, I think they find that the CPA votes are more successful in presidential election years. So they're really trying to make a push. So I know Jeremy had, uh, put a, made, done a, a preliminary, um, presentation to us on CPA. I, I guess I just wanted to see, um. Wh- when is the warrant closing and could we put a placeholder on? On it for CPA to just give us the option. We don't, we shouldn't do the discussion tonight, but I just want to have, have a placeholder on there so that we could, uh. Put CPA on the warrant.
You set this calendar for closing the warrant, January twenty fifth at five o'clock. So. The, the day of your next meeting, the warrant closes unless you open it again, vote to open it again.
Because I, I feel like in the past, it's not been not uncommon to have various placeholders in there that subsequently get taken off, you know, later. You know, e- even, even a couple of weeks before the public hearing. Um, so I just. Uh, I think it would be, it would, it would be prudent to put a placeholder in for CPA and. I guess Jeremy, that would give you a bit more time to, I think from the, at the last meeting, some people had asked for some follow-up information. Um, so, so I'll give you some time to, to put that together and then, and then we can decide, um. Whether we really want it on the warrant or not, is that?
Well, the warrant's closing before our next meeting, so would it be wise for us to vote now to? Just add it as a placeholder and we can always take it off? I don't know, maybe Paul, you can advise us, but. We won't get another vote unless we reopen the warrant.
So you can. The statute says that the warrant's under the. Control of the Board of Selectmen and the opening and closing is really for citizen articles. You always have the right to add a, articles. Later. After you close the war. So it's, it's not impossible to add the warrant. Uh, add an article to the warrant for CPA. After. The warrant closes. But there's, there's nothing wrong with adding it now either and taking it off, it's just. Two different ways to do the same thing.
If it's the consensus of the board, we can add it as a placeholder. Um, by way of other, they, one of my, one of my updates was on the status of the warrant articles, there. There appears to be four planning board articles that may come forward, uh, for the spring. Uh, we'll propose the creation and funding of an opioid, opioid settlement special revenue fund. There may be some personal board, um, personal administration plan updates. And we haven't seen any citizens petitions filed thus far. So that's kind of the current status of the town meeting warrant for the spring.
Uh, since we're thinking of putting in placeholders. We could also put in a placeholder for a possible, uh, bylaw concerning public meetings. And then if we happen to have it ready, we can bring it forward. Because it would be good to get something in place.
Well, I'm not in favor of bylaw personally, but if the select board wants to, I think we can handle this without a bylaw in my view. But if pe- people collectively want to do that, I, that's fine.
I could go either way. It just popped to mind because somebody mentioned the possibility of doing a bylaw, but.
Yeah.
I don't feel strong.
I think it's an extreme way to handle a situation that we, uh, need to handle better, not just. Relating to the recording of the meetings, but the running of the meetings also. But, um. Yeah.
I want to make, I don't make a non-agenda discussion, but maybe just. Just remind me why, what's Charles River Watershed Association have to do with CPA? They want.
They, I, I think all it is, is that they, uh, they, they want all of the towns in the Charles River watershed to be CPA communities. There's you. I, I think they just, uh, they just want, um, all of the, the towns in, um, the Charles River watershed to adopt CPA. And we're, we're, we're one of a little swath of towns, uh, uh, that, that are not CPA communities. And so I think they're, they're just pushing to get, you know, get us all.
They must have something in mind. They might, they have to have something in mind because it. I mean CPA can use a million different things, you know what I mean, and, uh. They, they definitely have something with something in mind. I'm, okay, I don't want to say too much, but I'll tell you right now that universally, I don't agree with CPA. I mean, the benefits they had was very early on, now there's really no benefits. I find that the way around town meeting, you, you're increasing taxes, now it's a little fundness discretionary. And now, you know, so selectmen can actually go spend it on capital expenditures and almost, uh, go around town meetings, so. I'd have to, I look at the details of it, balancing myself, supporting CPA.
Maybe you could just tell them we're actually in the Sudbury River water, watershed area.
We have a little bit.
That's it, I think we need a bylaw to change our watershed.
Yeah. All right. So. How do people feel? I'm leaning towards, why don't we just reopen the warrant if we need to, rather than put things on there tonight? And, and then we'll have a li- we'll have thought through it a little bit further. Does that? Anyone opposed to that plan?
That's fine with me if the sort of, uh, legally. Mechanistically, that's okay, then that's fine with me.
Sounds, sounds like based on Paul's advice it is, so I think. Rather than put two or three things out there and then have to take them down, why don't we? Get a little bit more information and add them if we really want to, does that?
Yeah.
People feel comfortable with that?
Can we put CPA on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, sure. You got that Diane or Jeremy?
Yep.
All right. Any other select board reports? We want a select board reporter where the cat was tonight though, Eric. Going down below there. He's been hiding, I haven't seen him all night.
Well, she brings in toys and she yells and cries, yeah, so.
All right, so, uh. Jeremy, uh, you're, you're, oh, go ahead, Paul.
Can I make a promotion to a journal or?
Yeah, you can't, no, because we haven't had a town administrator report. You can keep your hand up if you want, but we'll let, we don't want to, we don't want to shut Jeremy down.
Thanks, I would, covered a, a few of these already, um, so I won't repeat these, but, um. I wanted to point out, we also, we just heard our fair share amendment, Paul mentioned this earlier in the meeting. That, uh, the four percent tax on incomes over one million, that fair share amendment that was passed to come in two thousand. That the four percent tax on incomes over one million, that fair share amendment that was passed to in two thousand twenty two. Is allotting a hundred thousand. Dollars towards local transportation and our portionment for Sherburne. For FY twenty four is a hundred and fifty five thousand, seven hundred eighty seven dollars. So that'll be in addition to the chapter ninety monies that we get from the Commonwealth. That's two hundred and fifty two thousand dollars per year, so. That's a fairly good increase in the amount of state funding for roadways. We heard back from STP that they've approved our long term action plan for the PFAS compliance for the town camp as well. And basically a synopsis of that the plan is seeking design funds at the spring town meeting. And then at a later date, either seeking grant funding or a future town meeting appropriation. At a later town meeting to to do through the construction, so and in the interim, providing that alternate water supply, so they've DPs up. Okay with that timeframe. Which is good news. And just a heads up that the rural field irrigation wells, that aqua feed process. Looking like the vendor will be out next week doing that work to do the. Increase the capacity. Or, you know, work to maybe increase the capacity of those wells next week. And that's it.
Well, Mother Nature is trying to help. Mother Nature is trying to help with the capacity.
Sure.
If all that rainfall, I would be surprised that they're not underwater. The wells. Giving you a huge volume.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So now you may make a motion, Mr. Durasis.
I move with your turn.
All right, is there a second? All right, Eric.
Gang.
Stephen.
I.
That's Mr. Yon's job. Paul.
Hi.
And Marion.
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you, guys. This is a great meeting. Good, good discussion and I think it's got us ahead of schedule, so thank you, Jeremy.
Nice job, Jeremy.
Thank you, Diane.
Hi, thank you.